I think that would've worked, but also with the truancy laws, what I think people don't understand is because when I was at South, it was still, when I finally left Boy's Town and came to South, it was still there, but truancy with the truancy laws, it goes by minutes too. So if I'm a minutes late to class, that adds up and that'll add up to a day, so that'll come as a day against you. And then you only get twenty days and you have to go to court. So if I'm late every day, or I have to take a bathroom break and I'm late to that, or it's four hundred kids in the hallway, you get a four-minute passing period and you're late to class as a tally, and it all adds up. So I can be there every day, but be late every day, then I still have to go to court.
So parties are against the law too?
Basically.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Kylie, maybe you can share a little bit about how that law has affected you?
I don't even know where to begin. There's so much that's gone on. I, I've never actually been to court, but, and I never got any charges filed against me, but like... I don't, I don't even know where to begin. There's so much that I've done out of class. I'm, I don't want to boast here, but I'm kind of a smarter person, so I'm way ahead of everybody else in school, pretty much. So, when I go to school, it's kind of boring, because there's nothing to do. I already know everything that's going on, whatever. So, I mean, I go there and I do what I have to do. But there was a lot of times that, there were a lot of opportunities that I had to go outside of my classroom, where I didn't go to school, but I still learned stuff. So like, one, one time I went with my mom, we went to Florida, and we saw one of the last space shuttle launches, that, in history, basically. And I missed school for that, but I wrote stuff. Like, my teacher gave me all my assignments and I got 'em all caught up, and I wrote like, a huge story about what I did while I was gone and all the stuff that I saw. And so, I mean, it wasn't like I wasn't doing anything while I was gone on vacation. And then, um, I went, just one year, I went to the Bahamas for a family reunion, which I guess, I don't know, it's not really educational, but it is. And I did the same thing with the Bahamas that I did with Florida. I wrote a story, I wrote a ton of stuff out for my class.
You presented, did you present it?
Yeah, I presented it in front of class. I did all this stuff while I was on vacation, so I was still learning while I wasn't at school. Then, I had a lot, I'm kind of like a germ myself. I just catch everything that you could possibly think of anybody that could catch. I've had strep throat, I don't even know how many times since I was little. So, a lot of the time I was sick and I couldn't go to school, because if I went to school, I'd get somebody else sick. And then, that wouldn't be good, because they'd be gone too. So then, um, I had one year where I was sick like, all twenty days. And, I know it's kind of a jumbled mass of information, but I don't really remember when all this stuff happened. I'm sorry.
But you got letters?
Yeah, but I got a letter in the summer after one year, and I actually went out and I found it in the mailbox. I'm the one that found it and I read it, and it was pretty upsetting, because it was a letter from the Douglas County-
Attorney.
Sarpy, Sarpy County, sorry. Uh, the Sarpy County people. And they basically said in the letter that my attendance was unacceptable, even though all the reasons I was gone, like my parents told them I was gone, and-
Kept up with your work.
Yeah, I kept up with my work, I did everything I needed to do. And they basically told me that it wasn't acceptable for me to be gone, at all, for no reason, even if I was sick.
And then did you ca-, you mentioned that county attorneys started coming into your school?
Yeah, but that was, that was last year. But then, so, I mean, that letter, that was pretty upsetting. But then, like Melanie mentioned, I actually had, last year, it was kind of weird, because OPS's policy is set up differently than my school's was. Like, the school had a completely different one than OPS did. And they didn't really follow OPS's, they followed their own. So like, at Ryan Middle, their policy was, after five days of absences, you would go into this meeting. And this meeting was with the counselors and then the other people who had missed five days. And they would basically give you this sheet that said, that had all this stuff on it, and I guess you had to answer the que-, I don't really remember, because I was hysterical. So I'm gonna tell you the best I can remember. But it had like a sheet and it had these questions on it, and it was like, "What are all the reasons that you've been gone? And do you think this is acceptable yourself? And, um, what can you do to fix why you've been gone? And what can, what can the school do to help you? Or what can the counselors do to help you? What kind of help do you need so that you're not, that you're not sick? Or you're not absent, or whatever?" It's like, how do you, how do you expect us to answer that? If we're sick, what are we supposed to do? I mean-
And we weren't, we weren't informed that you were going to that meeting either.
Yeah, and they didn't tell the parents. So then, my mom was pretty ticked off, and I was-
Pretty ticked.
And you were pulled out of class to do this, Ellen?
Yeah, I was pulled out of, it's kind of weird, because at my school, we had a first, we had block scheduling, so we had a class first, and then we had homeroom, and then the rest of our three classes during the day. So, homeroom was second. Room room was second, and then they pulled us out of homeroom to do that. So, I mean, you didn't really miss an actual class, but you missed, you know what I mean? Um, and then, so, they had the first meeting, which was the five-day one, and then at seven days, I believe, they would send a letter home. And I'm not quite sure, we, did we get that letter? I don't think we did. So like, I went to the five-day meeting and then I was gone more days, because I was sick, and I got past seven days and I never got another letter that they said you would get.
So then the county, tell people, so that we, don't run out of time for this, tell people about the county, the day the county attorney's-
Alright. Um, and then the ten-day meeting, which was, well, my mom went up there and told them not to put me in another meeting, but then, they have, apparently their attendance policy said that after ten days, they put you in another meeting. And so, I got called into another meeting, and I remember this one better, because I was hysterical. But, uh, it was like, the counselors were in there too, and it was the administrators and the principal, the two junior county attorneys, from Douglas County, I think, were in there, the two girls. And, um, they basically, it was basically a meeting for people who were ten days and over. Like, ten days to forty days, they said, actually, that some people there had missed forty days. And, I mean, they came in there and they were like, "If you don't go to school, this is gonna happen to you, and this is gonna happen to you, and possibly you could get taken away from your family." And, I mean, it was, it was kind of like a scare tactic. It was actually pretty nerve-wracking.
And again, no parents were informed.
Yeah, and they don't tell the parents.
They just grabbed the kids, went in there, the county attorneys jumped on them. Without any parents, no occasion. Needless to say-
So, you had, you've, you've never been truant. Your family has known where you were every single day that you've ever missed school. You're not-
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt, but I'm, I've gotta go, but I want to say something.
I would, I, I would love for you to have time.
When I refer to y'all as children, I don't mean like juveniles. There are, I grew up in a church. I paid attention to the Bible, I read things, I wanted to know. This verse that stuck out in my mind ever since I was little. And it said, "He who offends against one of these my little ones, it was better for him that a millstone be hanged around his neck, and he be drowned in the depth of the sea." Before I was married, before I had children, children who were physically assaulted at Lothar School, which was about three blocks from the barber shop, would come to the barber shop, and I would go up there and I could confront the teacher. And I'd tell the teacher, "Do to me what you did to that child." So then, when they found out that the children were coming to me, they would get the teacher out of the school. I could tell you all the horror stories, but this is where I'm gonna get to. The things they do with these children cannot under the law be done to adults accused of crimes. There's a Supreme Court decision that Jamila's recitation made me think of. The courts were talking about the meaning of the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution, which will give us cruel and unusual punishment. The judge said, "The state can make the drinking of one drop of liquor a crime." But if they took a glass of liquor and counted every drop in that glass, and made each drop a separate offense, that would be cruel and unusual and violating the Constitution. And they're gonna count the minutes that somebody is late. Then they're gonna have these youngsters who have no children, no work experience, cloaked with the power of the state, given a title, where they can bulldoze and bulldog wrong people, and then threaten to have them handcuffed, taken to jail. This is unconscionable. And I want to ensure all of this- Jesus, who was a gentle person, which I'm not, had said that it would be better for them to be cast in the depth of the sea and drowned. Well, it'd be better, I guess, for them to be drowned than to run afoul of me. Because I will not tolerate children being abused by anybody. I had to get into the legislature before I could have corporal punishment banned from the schools. And when I confronted teachers, I put my hands on them. There was a giant, he's probably still alive, his name was Cromie. We had young people here and I don't- I, I never was obviously bigger than what I am now. Every teacher I ever confronted was far bigger than I am. But as they talked about what happened to these children, these huge men began to look like Tom Thaw. And there's not one of them I ever backed down from. And I told them, if they wanted to be physical with me, maybe I'm weaker than cream, maybe I can't lick my lips, but they would know that they'd been in a tussle if they tried to put their hands on me, and not one of them ever did. So this is a law on the books, which they waited until I was out of the legislature before they presented. They wouldn't dare bring anything like that. When Senator Ashford, whose heart is as good as gold, but in this case it was fool's gold, saw some program out in one of these other places, and said it can be taken, hold, and set down in Douglas County. When I found out about it, I was a member of the learning community. And they were gonna take hundreds of thousands of dollars of that money and give it to the county attorney, and I proposed it. I fought it, but I had only one vote. And I told them how wrong it was to take this money and give it to the county attorney. And if the state created an obligation on the county attorney, with all due respect to my colleague, Sister Borgerson, the county is to pay for it, the county. And the county was getting more than a million dollars to administer the distribution of this money that the learning community levy and go to the different school districts. And they could have easily taken money from that to fund these county attorneys. But I did not want anything pertaining to education to be a part of the criminal justice system. And that's what juvenile court is. And circuit bench could be called a witch, the word that rhymes with witch. And that's the person that I want to get off the bench. And I mean every word that I'm saying. Court is not a friendly place. Court is not a comforting place. I've seen lawyers handling cases, when they went into court and they were not the ones sharp, and they'd be shaking. I'm probably the only one who makes the judge shake when I go in court. I don't shake when I go anywhere unless it's with anger or fury. But to take these children, who have done nothing wrong, and subject them to what somebody accused of a crime cannot be subjected to, has to stop. Now, I want to get rid of all those things that smack a criminal prosecution, a punishment. I don't want the juvenile court connected with it, because I don't trust the juvenile courts. And I would say these things in court or legislature. And I've mentioned circuit bench at hearings before the Chief Justice. So I'm going to lay it all out. We will have to have something in place to help the families of those whose children are absent for any number of reasons or no reasons. But to say that we can show fewer children are truant, as they call it, let's just say that they're telling the truth because of this draconian bill, and therefore it's working, I'd say, but here's where it would work even better. If you said you're gonna take the parents and drive a nail through their hand, and drive a nail through the child's hand, you wouldn't have anybody missing school, and you could say it works. But there are appropriate ways to do things, there are proportionate ways to do things, and this particular law should not have been put on the books. I don't know what we're finally going to wind up with. I will never say what the end will be from the beginning. There are individuals, there are groups, there are senators who are interested. I believe in collecting as much information as possible, but then I will make what I feel is the final and best decision. So I hope you all, and I know you won't, you won't be discouraged, I wish I could've been there. When these children needed somebody, and I'm late, but I'm here now. There is a change that is going to come, I promise you. And people call me the devil. Well, when you pray to this devil, you'll get a response that you won't get when you pray to the other one. And that's all that I'm going to say. But if I were a part of speech, I would be an action verb. I wanted to come here to hear from people, as Brother Hamilton pointed out. Not really needing to hear, because I get phone calls, I get letters, but I want to be able to say, "I went to the meeting, I heard it by own ears, I heard the testimony of two young people, and we've got to make a change." I did not want to be the first one to say anything, because sometimes it's like a wet blanket and people will not feel comfortable speaking after I do. But since I've got to go now, I don't want you to think I'm running out on you. I still go to Lincoln every day, even though we're not in session. I get there early, I stay late, because there are things that need to be done, and I'm doing what I think it is that I ought to do. But in the same way that I go down there and I have things to do, my day does not end with this meeting, so I've gotta go to some other things. But I want you to know that you can reach me at my office. I have my name and phone number in the phone book. I'm not high-tech, low-tech, I'm no-tech. At least have one of those things that will take messages on the telephone. So if you leave a message, give your phone number slowly and clearly, and don't bite off the end of the message, because some people even call me and say, "Senator, I hope you'll call me back and hang up, and I don't have a number." So that's all that I'm going to say, and I hope you all will understand. And that's, that's, that's the, why. He's back! Is because his blood, his sweat, has always been in this community, always. You mean, I like everything he says. He's always been committed to do what's right, especially about his kids. So now that he's on board with stuff, we got work to do. We got work to do. We got work to do. So, uh, hold on, everybody come out. Let's don't let this stop here. Let's get the work done. Our babies, our babies are looking for us to be, as soon as they say. I almost cried when I, when I saw that. I looked at you, and he looked at me, because he feels that way about his community and his kids. And I, I'm a father, I know how it is, because I feel that same way. So when he told that story, you was at, when he was at OPS, it was you. They got me, get off my butt. And I could not believe how articulate you were and where you were going. And I saw what you was going through with the same thing, easily, my kid a bit of it, easily. So, uh, let's, let's get this thing done.
And we still have an hour, we still have an hour, it's only seven. And so, um, you know, and we have, I'm sure a lot of people want to talk, but I, I would like Gina to come up and say a few words as a parent.
You're gonna have me talk after that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But as a parent, um-
Nobody wants to talk now.
Yes, whenever, whenever-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's, uh, the question's just, it, it'll get asked in a relevant amount of time.
Okay, alright, alright. I won't forget you. Gina, um, Gina is a parent.
He knows he can't talk before me, so he's been trying to.
Wait till Gina says.
Just wait till Gina talks, and I'll get it.
So, I'll just let Gina introduce herself. She is a parent who has a lot of experience with how this law has affected her own family, and she's been a part of seeing how it's affected many others.
Um, I'm Gina Miller, and I'm an OPS parent, and I have an, a current an eighth grader and a fifth grader. One who has a chronic undiagnosed illness, and one has excessive absences, and one who basically has perfect attendance. And that never seems to make a difference to people, that you have one child that's there every single day, and the other one isn't, and you're still kind of a criminal. When, um, the law was passed, which I didn't even know that there was a law, um, I, we started receiving the letters from OPS. And I think it, it's been articulated extremely well here this evening, but in a lot of other forums, what doesn't come across is, and especially when I talk to my friends, is, "Well, what's the big deal? You're getting a letter, so why are you getting wound up about? Have you been referred yet? Have you gone to court?" And I've been one of the fortunate ones that have not, but I think only because of my activism in the community. But, uh, the letters basically read very threatening, at least the OPS letters. And I was like, "Oh, what, this can't be possible. What, they're gonna refer me to the county attorney? That, I, I call my kid in sick every day, I have doctor's notes, I've talked to their teachers every day, she's on honor roll. What am I missing here?" And I grew up in rural Nebraska, so, you know, the, the, the big city, as I call it, is just a completely different mindset for me. So, when you would talk to a teacher in rural Nebraska, that teacher would talk to the principal, "This kid's on track and everything's okay." So, then, um, so I was thinking, "Well, maybe I just don't get it. Maybe I'm missing something." So I started getting involved in the law and, and found the Nebraska Family Forum, which was a godsend, and found Sharif, which was a godsend. And Sharif is one of the directors of the Attendance Coalition here in Omaha, which does amazing work. And, um, the Nebraska Family Forum was very active, and we have met with principals, we've met with social workers, we've met with county attorneys, we've met with the Douglas County Board, we've met with legislators, we've met with community organizations, we've met with, um, senators, I, anybody who can possibly listen to this problem, we have talked to. I have personally talked to. And especially in the beginning, it was this big finger-pointing game. So we would go to the school board and they would say, or to the school, and they'd say, "Well, that's the policy, so you have to go talk to the school board." And then you'd go talk to the school board, and the school board would say, "But that's the law, so you have to go talk to your senators." And then you'd go to the senators, and they'd say, "Well, but this is a good law. You gotta, it's the problem with the, with the school board, so you gotta go talk to your school board." And then the school board would say, "No, it's the county attorney. They're, they're interpreting it wrong, so you gotta go talk to the county attorney." And so we, for three years, and I've been telling everybody this, that I just feel like, as a parent with a sick child, and I don't care if she's sick, I've quit using that, I've quit saying that in my introduction, because I hate it that they say, "Oh, as long as we get the sick kids out of the program, it's gonna be okay." It's not okay. Law enforcement should never be involved with education. It's fear and intimidation, and it has to stop. So where the, um, so I kept feeling like we were just screaming in the dark. I just would go and visit people, and they would come around, and they would, we'd just be screaming again, and, and my kid kept getting sicker, and the threats kept getting bigger, and, um, but when the light bulb clicked with me was, um, one of the meetings with Mr. Klein. He's very openly says, "We, we don't like this law. It, you know, this is a nightmare for us. I mean, we want to, we want to prosecute the murderers and the drug dealers and the, you know, but it's the law, we're, we're required to do this, and we're doing what they feel is the best thing that they can do." And then, when I was fortunate enough to meet Ajmal and get, um, I'm sorry, Ajmal. I have even worked with Ajmal for like, seven years, and I saw him all of a sudden show up there, and I was just like, "Wait a second, when I started working with Sharif, okay." You're outta here, Ajmal, you don't get any credit, Sharif. And, and then I, I was in these meetings, and there were fifty, seventy-five agencies that were coming together that wanted to work on getting kids to school. And I'm looking around this room, and I am like, this isn't, it's not a truancy issue, it's not an absenteeism issue, it's not a, a law enforcement issue, it's a connection issue. It's an engagement issue. We need our schools to come back to trusting the parents and quit doing the finger-pointing game. And we need to have parents involved to help schools, to get kids engaged to want to come to school. And then we need the help, if necessary, from all of these beautiful people in this community that want to help, and all of these millions of dollars to connect those resources, and, and not take little children and put them into the court system. It is insane, it's child abuse, it's adult bullying. There is no other way around it that you can look at this situation. My child goes to school, and she has, um, social workers that come up to her at her locker, in front of her friends, and say, "Well, Megan, I see that you're in school today. Do you know how many days you've missed so far this year?" And she looks at them and she, you know, kind of in her little bit of attitude, thirteen-year-old body, says, "Yes, I know exactly how many days I've missed, but I bet nobody else here in this school has, because they haven't been threatened with law enforcement." And then she'll be somewhere else, and they'll be walking down the hall, and I, I do think, but this is how she interprets it. I do think that they're actually trying to be kind here, because I do try and give the benefit of the doubt when I'm not in the school. But, "Well, Megan, I'm so glad that you're at school here today. You don't look sick." And she's like, "I'm not sick, I'm at school. And when I'm sick, I'm home. And when I'm not sick, I'm in school. I love school, I want to be in school, I like my friends, I like my teachers." I call her in every day, I give her assignments, we talk to the teachers. But somehow, that information isn't being processed to the social workers, and to the SPAs, and to the district, and to the, the fourteen layers of this attendance machine that we've created. I am so thankful for the work that Sharif does, and I'm so thankful for the new board at OPS. I, I wish that Mr. Wayne could've stayed a few more minutes. They have been extremely responsive. We are praying that they will continue to vote for a strong attendance policy. But one of the things that, that Melanie brought up in the policy, um, they, they have, it possibly could be one of our strongest ones in, in the state. But, so, it will be illnesses excused up to four days, and then after the fourth consecutive day of illness, um, to, they would like you to get a doctor's note. I think that's pretty, if your kid is sick for four days with a hundred-degree fever, I would hope that somebody would get them to the doctor, if possible. But at least it's not a doctor's note every day. And if you have a chronic illness, the astmas, the-
Like her sister?
Or your sister, my child, they were, they're thinking now that it might be migraines, anything that's a chronic illness, one doctor's note at the beginning of the year that states you have a chronic illness, and then you call them in every day, but you tell them they are sick home with asthma today. And that one will, will cover that. But what they have not addressed is, is the tardies. And so, the, the missing and, you know, getting in- And so, the, the missing and, you know, getting in, getting out. OPS never had funerals. Um, the only two excused absences in OPS were with a doctor's note, and we all know that kids can be sick for a thousand reasons, especially in minority groups or in individuals in, in situations of poverty, and you aren't able to get to the doctor. I don't send my kid to the doctor. If she's home with a hundred degree temperature, I'm gonna put her to bed, I'm gonna give her a Tylenol, and I'm gonna pray that she's better in the morning. I'm not gonna take her to the doctor, and I have insurance and good coverage. Other people don't. And so, only, the only two excused absences was that, um, a doctor's note, and now there's some question whether or not that's even acceptable. And then, um, the other one is suspension. Thank you. So, if your kid is doing drugs on school property and gets suspended, you will not be referred because, for attendance, because you are not counted absent for the days that you have been suspended. So, there's just so many crazy things that are going on.
All right. So, to Sharif, he had a question.
He left a question of whether or not, in terms of the efforts of the adjustments or the repeal, uh, are we also working on getting a definition of truancy? Because truancy is one of those areas that it's a matter of, um, personal opinion. I think that on a national level, there's not a national definition, so if you're looking up national attendance data related to truancy, it's hard to find, you can't say that one city has more than another, because one defines it as the parents don't know, some districts define it if the, if the school or parent doesn't know, um, others, um, have, you know, just define it if they're not in school. Nebraska does not have a definition in place at all, so therefore, the particular law became nicknamed a truancy law. The problem with it, with that definition is trying to get something so that when we make the changes that are necessary, that we're able to address the category that's left. So, I know that a lot of the conversation is saying, "Well, let's look at really truant kids," which makes sense, but then who are they?
Well, our, our definition is one that we got from the dictionary. Absent without the knowledge or permission of your parent or guardian. Now, the question that we keep getting is, what about those parents that deliberately don't send their kids to school? Well, I contend that those parents are few and far between. Not very many parents wake up in the morning and say, "I'm gonna try to inhibit my kid's education today, 'cause I want their life to suck even worse than mine." I mean, you may have, you may have some people who have substance abuse issues and other issues going on in their life where they are not getting their kids to school. They have laws in place for that.
Two, two things with that. One is, yeah, um, the knowledge, if I know that my kid is not at school today, um, then it would be that I would have to tell the school that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you'd have to follow your school's policy.
So, if I fail as a parent to call in, then that would be considered a truant kid if a parent is not calling that in.
Well, I guess, I think that would be up to the school.
Right, the way it's always been, like, I mean, we all went through school, right? As, as kids, I mean, we, we were, we were kids, and we went through school, I went through public school. And, um, when our...
It's unexcused if you don't, if nobody called the test.
It was unexcused, but what, what the, what the school would do is they would call the family and say, "And, and sometimes my mom would have forgotten to call. You know, that happens. People are busy, or there's stuff going on, or maybe they, you know, in some situations, like, um, Anthony, who wasn't here to speak again, he was here for the press conference or down at the Douglas County Civic Center for the press conference, but he, his mother said that her phone was shut off sometimes, and so she couldn't, she didn't have an easy way to call in the morning. But the school knew the family. The school knew the kids weren't really truant, because they knew the family. Right, and so...
I think language can be a barrier too, that there has to be something that figured for, for addressing different languages. If I'm calling in, and I'm speaking in the where, and you can't understand me, and you say, "I'm truant," then we got a conversation. I guess what I'm asking is, um, is that part of this effort is to get that defined legally?
Yes, that is part of our effort, is to repeal the current law and replace it with a law that's really about truancy, defined as absent in school without the knowledge or permission of a, a parent or guardian. And I, I wanna make a really fine distinction here. Schools may have different policies. You, you might, you might get in trouble with your school if you don't call your kid in when they're gone, but that shouldn't be a crime. And that's what's happened with this law, is that things like that are a crime. Things like the car breaking down or the phone being out of service, now that's a crime, and that can throw your child into the juvenile justice system.
Different things like the policy situation where there's something to adjust to, but when you've made that a criminal situation.
Right, right.
Absolutely, that takes another...
But, but the fact of the matter is, this, this is kind of a policy as tough drug policies, gun policies, zero tolerance, and they're using this as a mechanism to be able to do some of the things that the kids are doing. The fact of the matter is, our kids are more important, are more important than our teacher, are more important, and policies and all this other stuff that these people are doing. Like, the fact of the matter is, we, as African Americans, know that I gotta tell my kids that every day. Look, you are endangered species, and you have to care for yourself totally different as that. So, when you go to school, you can't be doing all this crazy stuff, they're gonna, they're gonna put you in a box, and then they're gonna be pressuring you all the way through school. So, as a parent, I was conscious enough to do this. Anytime my, my kid was involved with any type of obligation, I put a note, and my child's... Anytime my child's involved with that, and there's a, there's even a hint, y'all gonna do that thing to him? I'm gonna be in the room. You wouldn't question my child, the police wouldn't question me, so why would I let you question my child when I'm not in the room? Everyone, every parent should have a note saying, "Look, if it's gonna, if it's gonna involve any type of discrimination with my child, I'm gonna be in the room. If not, y'all can't talk to my child." Because you can ask my child a question, and he may not know what, what you're talking about, but you answer in such a way, they can use that against you. We gotta be proactive and not be reactive about what's going on.
That's a good point. Does, does, does anybody know, does OPS call when a kid is not in school?
Yes.
Because I've, I've had that.
Well, you're correct.
We always called.
Did you have one in middle school?
I represent, I have a, I have two programs, an adult program and a juvenile program. I represent a lot of the adults who did not go to school. The county attorney this year has referred forty-seven families to me for kids who are just truant, they will not go to school, and of that, I would say ninety percent of those parents are enabling those kids. And when I talk with the parents, they're saying, "Um, well, I don't go to school, why should I have to get up to get them to go to school?" Now, I am passionate about that, because I will get those kids on the tail end. I have adult men and women coming to my program that cannot read and write, because somebody did not care enough to send them to school, and then they become the society's problems when they become adults. On the other hand, I will say I support efforts, sick, sick kids should not be prosecuted. The way I understand the system is working, from my own personal experience, the county attorney is not immediately referring these kids to the court system. They're sending them to programs like ours. So, if they get a referral of a child who has excessive absences, they're sending them to community providers to look into those underlying factors that may cause these kids to be absent. I know because I'm serving a large number of those families in those referrals. And what I am finding out, there are issues that are keeping parents from parenting. They are overwhelmed with maybe joblessness, poverty, a lot of other factors, mental health themselves. And if it was not for the county attorney's office referring these parents to us, we probably, paths will probably never cross. So, we're able to now help them put resources in that house to address those issues.
So, here's a...
Eighty-five percent of my kids, since they've been referred in the past thirty days, have missed adult school.
Well, and we know some of those kids, and some of those kids should not be in school, and they're going anyway because of the fear of the, from the county attorney. So, there are two sides to these stories, and we hear yours.
They shouldn't be in school. The kids, I'm addressing, I'm telling you now, I have vetted these problems, and I'm telling you the families, I would just say the number is, just say, sixty-seven, I could feel very comfortable speaking on, that I researched, my staff have researched, these kids have no verifiable reason to be absent.
I said, I'm still dealing with mercy.
The, 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 all I'm gonna say is there, I wanted to present the fact that, from my own personal experience, these kids are not being immediately referred to county attorney, I mean, to the prosecution. They're being sent to programs to help address those issues.
Right.
And I thank God for that, because those families are being supported and served, and now they're becoming stronger.
And this is what our position is. The schools should be sending them to you.
The schools are doing that as well.
They're referring?
For example, I've had, I'll bet you fifteen have been referred by principals and counselors who are saying, "These kids are at five days, they're at nine days. We would like to do, see if you can intervene."
Good.
And it's not just my program, there's other programs like that.
Yeah, that's good. We don't think they should go through the county attorney, though.
Because I know sometimes we'll have some, some schools that I've worked with where, um, you have a principal that is aware of resources that are out there that utilize them, or the student personnel assistants are aware of them, and they're utilizing them, and then you have other schools, and they're calling me at, with, as attendance collaborative, but we don't do that. But they'll call, like, "Oh, I hear the name attendance in, in the name of your program, so I call and, this student's having this particular issue." And, and I'm thinking, "Wow, like, why don't you refer me to somebody who helps with that?" And like, your program would be one of them.
A lot of schools are doing that, because I, I get the calls from schools, and we get, we have to provide bus pass, sometimes the kids aren't going to school because of the OPS two mile plus school.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we're providing, that needs to be fixed. If a kid cannot walk to school, it's, you know, it could be a situation there, if a parent can't pay, yeah, that needs, that needs to be fixed.
But what you're talking about...
But I just wanted to put this out there, that these referrals are not immediately there, there, and I can't speak for other counties, I just know what's going on in Douglas County.
Okay, and I, and I wanna address that. First of all, I wanna dispel any notion that the Nebraska Family Forum thinks that kids should just stay home from school.
Right.
We don't believe that. We're against truancy. Kids need to be in school if they're well enough to be in school. In fact, the amendment that we presented cracked down on real truancy even more than the one that Ashford pushed through. Uh, we think five days. If that child is skipping school and his parents, without his parents' permission, twenty days is too long, you've lost that kid. We need intervention quicker. Our amendment didn't get through. My, my, my concern is that these kids should not be going to the county attorney at all. That is law enforcement. Whether they end up in court or not, they are now involved in the juvenile justice system. They should come straight to you from the school, or to GOALS. We created GOALS just for that reason, and we've dumped a couple million dollars into that program. Last year, GOALS got a hundred and eighty referrals, and the county attorney got thirty-one hundred. That should be reversed, and, and I commend you for, for helping these kids. I think that's fantastic, and they should come to you more often, instead of going through the juvenile justice system. Thank you for doing that work.
Yes.
Um, there's a question...
Are there other organizations, like, I know about GOALS, are there, um, a known set of, uh, resources like that that are available that can then be promoted to the schools in a way that all of them are implementing the same type of response systems?
That'd be great.
I think there are, but that's something that we as a community need to take ownership of. Have a resource fair, where families know that we're out here, programs like ours. Like, this one family, her kids aren't going to school because, you know what, any given day, she believes I show up with an eviction. By the time the girls have reached nineteen days, they refer them to us, and Nicole sent a personal note for us to intervene with these kids. You know, we got the rent paid up, we're getting her on section eight, so she can get into affordable housing, so we were able to solve all this. The mom ended up having an annual raise, because of that stress, but she should have known about community programs, and that's an us problem, that's a community providers. So, I'm just saying, you know, it's, I understand the conversations, but there needs to be so many other steps put into place before we just say, "We're not going to call somebody in town for these kids' attendance," because we'll solve our problem here, and we'll see it later in terms of adults who are illiterate.
I, I hear ya. So, there's a comment back here?
Yes.
Yes.
What I would say is, I spent the summer attending truancy education, and, um, I would like to report, because I do talk to the parents of truant children, and ask them just honestly, I identify myself, and tell them that I am against the truancy law, and I'm interested in their input. Many of these families report that they feel threatened when they have to go to the county attorney, and I personally feel as though that's a legitimate interpretation of what is happening. It is overwhelming to sit in a courtroom, whether it's by yourself or with a hundred other people, and they are formatting much of what is going on in a different way, but it is very intimidating, and I think the children who attend court would echo that. Many of these parents are dealing with poverty. They also report to me that the schools, their children, um, attend most frequently OPS, not to bash OPS. They tell me that they are not receiving phone calls from the schools. Lots of these families are single parent families. The parents have jobs where they don't make a lot of money. They are struggling to make it so that they can keep their families and their children together. It is not that they don't want to send their children to school, it is not that they have disrespect for education. And I guess I would politely ask, where is the examination of why children don't want to be in the school? And I think that is a bigger broader discussion. My last comment is, I did talk to, I saw this just charming young man in juvenile court, and I was waiting there, he had a little bow tie on, he was so cute, because there was his mom, African American kid, and I asked him, "Why are you here today?" And he said, "Truancy." And I said to him, "Why are you here not? Come on, don't you wanna be in school?" And he told me, "Yeah, I do, I mean, my goal is, I would like to graduate, and I would like to go join the military, and I want to go down to Florida where my brother is." And I said, "Well, how can you do that if you don't get high school today? Why aren't you going to school?" And he told me, he's afraid, he's afraid. He goes to Benson High School, and he's afraid, because there are shootings in his community, and there are people that he knows that are being assaulted, and he's afraid in the schools. Where's the discussion about that? And as an adult, if you're afraid to go to work, because you're afraid of what's happening around you, that's legitimate, you could talk to your supervisor, you could do some things. What happens if you're fifteen and you're afraid? That, that's my comment.
And Jamila, and it looks like our two youth panelists have comments.
Okay, um, and I, I understand what she's saying about that young boy. There were days that I didn't wanna go to school either, because I'm different than everybody else, so everybody else just makes fun of me, and there are a lot of bullies. And so, and you tell administration, and a lot of the times, they just tell you not to worry about it. So, I mean, there are days that I didn't wanna go to school, 'cause there were a lot of mean people.
Do you find situations where, like, um, in terms of the resources that are available, there aren't fitting? So, so when you come with a legitimate reason why you're not wanting to come to school, and then the adults around, instead of figuring out a way to connect with you, are saying, you know, "It's, it's gonna be fine, just don't worry about it." You think it's bullying, but it's really not, or it's not gonna affect you, instead of saying, "Okay, what is a connection that we can give you that can support you?"
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I've had times where there's this one boy that, he's always been a bully, and I've like, he did, I don't even remember what he did, but he did something, and it didn't make me very happy, and it really upset me, actually, and I went to the principal, and he was just like, "Oh." I told him what happened, and he was just like, "Oh, okay." And that was the end of it, so like, and then I didn't wanna go to school, because...
And the kids just continued.
Yeah, and they just, they don't stop, they don't talk to them.
How about that, Jim?
Go ahead, follow her.
What I was gonna say as far as what she said is that they don't go straight to court. Well, I didn't have that luxury of going to her program, or whatever program there is out there to keep us from going straight to court, I went straight to court. And then even after my court system, when KDC and everybody came in to work with our family, they didn't help us. He talks about the weather. We watched him. "What are you here for, while we're talking about the weather? You're wasting my time." And, like I said, I spent all that time at a group home, because first of all, before I even got placement, before I was in a trans, like a, what do you wanna call it? Yeah, transition hall, because nobody would pay for it, but Dylan said that, there was no reason to be there. So...
So, they were like, "I'm not gonna pay for it."
Yeah, so I had to sit there before I even got to go to treatment, because nobody would pay for it, there's nothing wrong with me. So, the money that we used for that, they could be using on buying books, because I'm a junior, and there's a kid sitting next to me who's seventeen, and he can't read, because we only have fifteen books and thirty kids in the classroom. That's what I feel like we need to be working on instead of all the other bullshit.
And then, right, before, when you got, went to court, before that was, um, what, what happened before that? I wanted to ask that.
Before court?
So before the very first time when you're fifteen and they decided to send you off? What type of other solutions were put out there?
Nothing.
This is post the law being created, right?
No, um, I didn't meet with anybody. I went to my first court date and I had assigned caseworker. They, my judge asked me if I wanted a public defender. I didn't even know what I needed going forward, so I told her no.
So you, this is.
Wait, can I, wait a minute though. Did you have any instruction about what was happening to you?
When I went to court? No, I just showed up.
So you had no clue and they're asking you if you want a public defender?
And I told her no.
And you, and. And your brother tried to say yes and she was told by the judge to shut up and sit down. Right, okay, go on.
Even though you're fifteen.
How many days did you miss that time?
My freshman year? I don't even know. I don't.
But I mean, there was no, there was no conversation about you got this many days, this many days, this many days. They just said you're going to court? Is that what happened?
I didn't talk, nobody asked me to talk to you.
Did you have a guardian ad litem?
No.
Or did you only have an attorney?
I didn't even have a guardian ad litem. I only had a social, which was right back off.
Um, Mr. Commissioner Borges.
Your case, one of the main reasons why this law was pushed through is because the schools dropped the ball.
Right.
At five days, at ten days, at fifteen days. As, as long as I've been on the county board, there's been times I went up and sat in the juvenile courts. And there were truancy hearings that had kids come in front of judges that at fifty days. How did we get there? And again, we, we have lost, in my opinion, this is not the county board's opinion, this is my opinion. There has been a loss of common sense of the schools working with the children and the parents. This should not, should not be legislated. This should not be criminalized. I love Levon. She does great work. But that should not, her referral should not come from the county attorney, from kids who are being thrown into a system in which we as county board members are trying to keep kids out of through our juvenile detention alternative initiatives. So on one hand, we're, we're coming up with all of these programs to keep kids out of the system. And at the other end, we're passing laws that are pushing them right into it. And so what I think is we've lost, one, the common sense, but we failed you. Senator Chambers hit it on the head. We weren't there for you when we should have been there for you, nor was the school there for you when they should have been there for you. So that's, that's how all of this got started. Um, and now we need to bring it back home and inject common sense back into this lunacy that's occurring.
And to her point, just sits where I'm at, that is one of our tasks, uh, Sharif. I gotta.
I was gonna say.
So our, our. As long as I don't, as long as I don't look at it, I can, I can do this. It's overwhelming. But our, our group is putting together a resource of community agencies and anybody that we can find. Those that we know of right now and those that all the communities are, have different websites. We're gonna try and combine those into one resource of a fashion and move forward with that. And I would like to also speak to the, because this is the, this is what people come up against whenever they're talking about. Where there seems to be disagreement among good-hearted people is this issue of, well, we're providing services. These, these families wouldn't get them if it wasn't for the county attorney. And we have to stop and, and step, take a step back and ask, why is that? Because when families are given services through the court system, they don't see them as services at all. Though it's, it's, it shouldn't be named services. It's punitive, it's, it's dictated. It's not because anyone has asked the family. What do you really need? You know, what is the, if, if you had a magic wand and could pick three things that really are what you need to help your child get to school? And we'll provide it, that would be services. But that's not what is happening. These families are being threatened first with a petition. Well, first with letters from the school that are very rude, very rude and threatening. Then with a petition that is delivered to them that is, has the language of child abuse and neglect. That is not nice language. It, it tells you that your child could be taken from you. So you are immediately compelled, commanded to court. And all of this is supposedly to get them services. That's not how families are taking this and they shouldn't be taking it that way. It is punishment.
Melanie, um, I think the gentleman had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this reminded me of the border ID bill. We're looking for solutions to a problem, literally, at the end of the day. And so what was effective about what we did to defeat that bill was we brought together a cross-section of organizations. We had almost fifty organizations and it never worked together before. But came together for a common cause, which is a law that did, that was.
For everybody, yeah.
It didn't exist. What has to happen here, we have to bring all the people to the table. This can't be just about black or, 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 or South, from all.
Or sick kids.
All kids.
All kids.
And how this law is bad for all kids.
Yep.
So that, that's gonna be our challenge is getting those organizations, like NFC, Voices for Children, Black Media United, Ferguson Research Institute, Fan Advocacy Movement, Malcolm X Foundation, coming together, Sparks Academy and say, this is a bad law. But we have to come together as a unit. We've got to come together as a unit to say, this is a bad law.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Muhammad, and then, uh.
Mary Ann Orson. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. You had made a point that I wanted to make, so I'm gonna ask you a question. The, uh, from the research, uh, which is from the Nebraska Family Forum. This is law is called a compulsory education law. And it says it requires parents of any child who is of mandatory attendance age to call such child to attend school regularly, which means to attend each day that such child is, that such school is open in a session. Except when excused by school authorities or when illness make attendance impossible or impacted. You mentioned that the school authority has failed the candidates. I have five children, three in public high schools and two in public schools. What I'm looking at is how to work within this law to solve the bleeding matter. Meaning if I did a excused absence note and took it to the school principal and had the school authority acknowledge it, would that be considered an excuse? Considering that this law is, because the law is just saying right here that except when excused by school authorities.
And what has happened is the schools have basically wiped all of that out. And there's a case, and Brenda will have to help me remember where, but there was a case where a child had nineteen excused absences. But yet had one unexcused, which then totaled twenty. And the law says the school may send that child to the county attorney if they have twenty or more absences. And the school opt to send.
By their standard policy.
They must, they must.
This is my point. I think our real enemy is the school system itself in terms of the principals and the attendance officers. Because they have, they are the ones who are making these reports by law to the agencies. And I believe this truancy is supposed, the law is supposed to be, because the key is compulsory, it's not attend, uh, truancy. We keep talking about, they define truancy in L E eight hundred. That's why we, where we at right now, because they defined it to be.
They crossed it out.
Twenty days. And then you come to the course. The five days which she didn't get and he did get, every child is supposed to get that within the law, is within the law. So what I'm saying is, as a parent, how did it get to be that we don't have any lawful representation? To make senators and those who are writing these things to do this? And then make the schools follow the law? If their parents did not receive a call, can they not charge the principal? With, uh, some type of truancy negligence because. Because the part of the compulsory part of it is mean mandatory with the parents and the school system. And somewhere we're losing is that it's just the parents and the child's responsibility. And I heard someone say how they passing the bug this way, that way, that way, that. But the law is clear. It says school authorities.
And I, but you know, the, the, the interesting thing about it is, is, and I point to Brenda all the time because when we had this discussion at the county board, um, you're right, the schools write up these reports. But where do these reports, where are they sent? They're sent to the county attorneys. That, to me, that's wrong. There should be actually, and whether it's a person independent of all of this stuff that looks at these quote reports that are written up to determine whether or not, or where the child should go or what the child needs. You have to back up the schools. That should not, the way the law's written, should not be moved into our criminal justice. I mean, you're basically sending people into this huge black hole of our criminal justice system, which is not a good place for families to be. So all of that, even though, all of that has to be wiped out in that law.
I'm sorry, and that's where, as Justice mentioned, and what they're looking at from the OPS board. So principals are not going to exercise any particular deviance in authority than is dictated by the districts. You know, there's some variances in that. Meaning there were some schools that if their school nurse sent someone home sick, they would put that in the system as an excuse for a doctor note because their school nurse said to go home. Another school may decide, well, the school nurse isn't a doctor and they're not their primary care physician. And the parent gets some say so in who they take to the doctor, so I'm not gonna give them a note because. And so here's the parent saying, wait, wait, you sent your kid home. So there's those kind of variances. But when the OPS board decides to make decisions to say, okay, this is how we're going to say yare and yon a particular rule. That's where the, um, school authority will say so. And right now, school authority refers to when the school says they want you to be out. Several occasions for that. Football games happening, it's in Grand Island, gonna take a little while to get there. All the football players get out at two o'clock. I'm not gonna record you to the county attorney for minutes missed. Uh, geography bee, uh, whatever it may be on the academic level that the school needs to be out. Recruitment, you know, uh, they may take North High students and send them over to King Science to recruit King Science kids. So when the school says, say, on that, or a suspension, which is being considered, the school authority saying that you couldn't go. And that's where the suspension falls under that, not because they like, like suspensions, but because that's saying that you can't come here. And just as an aside, what I throw in on that one is if you don't pay attention to suspensions, and again, this is outside of law, but into the common sense category, which is, don't ignore suspensions, pay attention to them.
Right.
But not send them to the county attorney, but pay attention because if that student has a lot of suspensions, they'll never get counted and they're not in the books for, uh, uh, this triage or any type of input. But this kid could have an easy solution. They're stuck in math and they're gonna skip it every day. And then if that causes too much, if they can't skip the class, then they might hit somebody to get out of school for today. So there's solutions that could happen, but not if you ignore certain reasons. And so, um, that's where I think the approach of being able to get a school district to make policies. And if we look across the state, Millard has ways to stay addressed from day one. Uh, OPS has ways. You look at any of the schools in the learning committee or even beyond that in West Nebraska, brought off the link. They've had different ways that they've addressed the authority issue. And have decided, as a principal of a school, I'm going to say, you know what? My authority says that that student is not going to need to be in school today. And other school districts, larger especially, when the reasons start to vary so broadly, they have challenges with creating a broad system to fix it because they're trying to do so with a policy and a law versus a way of interacting with families and, and, and that's what, that's what we're working on trying to do. It's like, um, the attendance collaborative came about before the law did and I thank God because, um, otherwise if we came afterwards.
It would be bad if it was for you.
But really, our effort was, how do we pull together the resources to be able to help, uh, students and families? And, and that all the resources know each other. So if I get someone coming to me as a resource and that's not what I provide, I know who else does. And in those meetings that we have are a combination of entities, some of them being the same kind of attorney folks who think that that's the best way to do it. If you are in the current of the, of the hammer comment or whatever, but if you are a hammer, everyone is nails. And so, um, if you are a lawmaker, you make a law to improve attendance. If I'm a parent, I'm going to parent this. If I'm a school principal, I'm gonna do certain approaches. If I'm, um, a psychologist or social worker, these are different approaches. So what we're trying to do in the coalition is get everybody to take it and address it. And in that room are some folks who have some, uh, views that are different from each other. But all of it is in response to students and not in response to a law. And so once this law goes whatever direction it does, it's still gonna be necessary that all of us are talking to each other about what's happening, what's going on. And so we started having some parent input because we were missing that and folks were saying, okay, so how do we know what the parents feel about it? And I'm coming from a perspective of someone whose my kids don't have problems making it to school. They're blessed with being healthy. Um, I always tell people, example, my son was sick one morning, saw him throwing up. I forgot to call till about noon. By the time I called, he had made it to school. And I, and he took the bus. He was like, I was sitting at home and realized, wait a minute, whatever I was sick with is now in the toilet. I'm feeling good, I'm gonna ride the bus to school. And so this is scenarios that, you know, um, doesn't fit everyone. So I said, I can't come with my perspect, perspective as a parent. I'm gonna have to hear from someone who's had some challenges with getting to school and then figure out what the solutions are for that. And I think especially in terms of the context of the communication, and I'll stop. The communication is really an area that's a difficult situation. Once the law came about, then it changed the conversation of the communication, which means that instead of telling you, sending you a letter about, okay, your student's gone, this is the homework that they need to make up when they get back. It's, you're gonna be referred. And we talked about this, uh, family that went to, was going home to Mexico. And they asked the principal if that was okay. She said, no, it's not. You've gotta come to school. They're like, well, we gotta go. She goes, okay, well, let me get two weeks worth of work gathered from the, uh, the teachers for your students. And then when you get back, we'll have the other two weeks of life for them. Not condoning the absence, but saying, if you're going, let's make sure that the academics are taken care of. The parent had always been, uh, valuing, uh, uh, education and appreciated someone not coming to them with this, it's the law. The principal did know that letter's gonna come, but she was like, I ain't getting in that conversation. So she said, I'm gonna help. Um, not everybody's out there to do that. And on the principal level, they got, they're following the district. So if we can stay on the board, give them information, they're open to learn about it. That will make, even without, even with the efforts that are happening with the law, even within what exists now, school districts can back that up. And if the law changes but the district doesn't, you know, so there's two issues.
That's what, that's what. And, and one of the, I know Jamila wants to say something, but I, I do want to address this real quick and then Jamila. One of the things that gets missed is that when this law was passed, it was twenty days, no matter what. If your kid had cancer, if you, if you were dying and you wanted to spend a couple weeks with your child at Disney World for the last memories that your child will have of you as a parent, it did not matter what. Whenever I throw these anecdotal stories out, those are real stories. Those are stories that we have heard. So this law was twenty days, no matter what. It was the Nebraska Family Forum who went to the state legislature and fought. We were the only ones fighting for some common sense at that time, for an amendment that would say, hang on, this, this is ridic, this is crazy. What you're doing is throwing everybody into the system because of issues that are out of people's control. And they made an amendment that was not the best amendment, but it was something. And the same thing with the Millard School Board, the same thing with the OPS School Board. The Nebraska Family Forum organized, knowing that the amendment brought it back to the districts, the school districts. We started organizing parents to go to their districts to start trying to make, you know, common sense policies at least until we can get this law taken care of. At least the school districts are then accountable to the families. You know, if we go and we speak to them and say, look, this is hurting us and, and you are our elected officials. So, you know, but it's been two years of fighting to get just this little bit done. And we have districts all over Nebraska that are doing these things. We were, we traveled out to Sydney with, for a family who had a hundred percent doctor-excused notes and this kid was moranized in court with a guardian ad litem and a prosecutor. And he was told that he would go to jail if he didn't show up for court. He's twelve years old. He was told that he would, could be taken away from his family. And he was not guilty of anything but illness after the amendment was passed. That would have allowed the school district to not criminalize him. So that's why we're saying you cannot go school district by school district anymore. This is an unfixable law. We've got to start over.
I was just gonna say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jamila.
It's because it's human beings that are involved with this. And there's a variable of human beings, and so it cannot be fixed because it's always gonna be the human factor in those decisions or, uh, their inability to actually follow it. And so it's better just to abolish it. And frankly, I haven't said this yet, but I wouldn't even support the idea of the state law. This should be a school district. It should, uh, it should be handled by the school districts. And by the way, you started out the presentation tonight by saying there wasn't a problem in the beginning.
Right.
And what I'm trying to suggest is, it may be a fallback position that says we have to say that there should be a state truancy law that deals with truancy. But the truth is there wasn't a real problem. And the, the remedy is between the school, the parent and the tribe.
And community services to address the.
Services, I agree with that.
And let me comment back on that.
And then, and then Jamila, because she's.
Because I'm thinking if, if, if the school, if I write a note as a parent, because I got five kids out here, I'm going to face this. And I can't get a principal to recognize me as authorized when I go to court. And we may have to go get the notaries. We need to get a law set because this is legislative.
And we may have to go get the notaries, we need to get the law set, because this is legislation. I mean, it's kinda like people fighting against Obamacare now, it's already law, but they really wanna change it, but it's law. This compulsory education law is law now. So, it'd be a long road to change it, but if we can connect that mechanism between the the school authority and the parents, so that we can get a clear understanding of excused absences, then it's gonna be, the responsibility's gonna be back on the parents to make sure that we get an excused absence. I would at least be comfortable fighting towards an excused absence, than I have a whole nother four thousand, two, three thousand parents going down there, and we, we back here, I mean, asthma, we right here by all these cold plants. And so, over eighty percent, especially African American children have asthma, and also European children have acne, they live in the same neighborhoods. So ain't nobody talking about that, and, and now a lot of us are dying off from the cancers from the cold plants. We're right here. So I think there's some other things from a law standpoint, from a parent standpoint, that I would like to just be a part of, and it'd be helpful.
Well, and I think that's where Justice Jester Wayne was saying, Monday night is the OPS board meeting, so it's very important to
To go and talk about what you're concerned about there. And Jamila
That's why.
Wait, one second, one second. Jamila gets to speak, and then whoever else wants to.
Oh, I was just gonna say something, because he says about the principals, and I know South's principal, she was for the law, and so I came and I talked to her one day, my sister's case record picked her up from school, because we had just gotta set up that her foster family would be my aunt, and then the judge was like, no, foster family means foster family, so they were gonna take her to somebody new. And I went to my principal, and I was upset, and she was like, she wrote me this sort of letter for court saying, like, she's not truant, she's sick, and then we get into the school social worker to court with us, because she said that's not how the law was explained to her, and she didn't know that that's what was happening, as far as my sister went. That's the only reason why she was for it, because it was explained to her differently.
That was Cara Rix. And she has tried to intervene. She's had a rude awakening. So, so this South High principal was a part of advocating for the law to be passed to begin with, she was very outspoken, because she's concerned about truancy and, and educational gaps and all of these things, which common sense, you know, would say, we're all concerned about these things, but how do you address them is where we're butting heads. This is where we're, you know, having a problem, is because what this law has done is thrown all of the decision-making into the legal, into the law enforcement realm and prosecution and judges, and we know people don't fare well there, and it, it doesn't belong there. Um I, I've always had a problem also with the premise of, you cannot learn if you're not in your class, in your seat at school, that is so wrong, and if, if all of our discussions are based on, on these premises that we don't agree on, then we're not really, we're not really talking about the same thing. So, you know, I'm, I'll never have a full discussion with someone who says, my child can't learn outside of the classroom, because I disagreed completely about that, I know better. My daughter went to Haiti for two weeks to volunteer for the, for earthquake-stricken, you know, families and building re- uh housing there. And that was something that she was given a, an opportunity to go do, and yes, she missed two weeks of high school, but you know what, she was a good student, and she had a life-changing experience, and I would have been wrong to deny her that experience, and I think that this law is wrong to criminalize children for taking those opportunities, so.
Well, even a second guess appear.
We have a child sitting right here, we have a child sitting right here who could not go to Hawaii for her sister's wedding, because she would've missed too many days and they would've prosecuted her. So that's, I mean, that's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, she couldn't go see her own sister get married.
And she's not, and, and part of this, not using common sense, grades, grades only seem to matter, you know, schools have power.
My wife went to jail.
Schools have power, they have the power to, to make you stay back a year, if you don't do your work, if you don't pass your grade. They should be, um, you know, they know, they're at that level where they know each student, and if a student is doing poorly and isn't learning how to read, then they are held back, or they get special tutoring, or they expect, you know, one-on-one help, but that's not what's happening, and, yeah.
I, I have two, two things. My daughter, who's uh sophomore at Burke, and she was, I live seven miles from school, she doesn't get transportation. If I wanna send her twenty miles to school, she can get transportation, but she can't get transportation to her own home school. Seven miles, she had to walk to school.
Even though her son goes to the same school.
My son, who is diabetic, goes to the same school on the same bus, could, or my daughter could not ride that bus.
Wow.
My daughter chose to walk to school one day.
What school?
My daughter chose to walk to school one day, the only way she knew how to go to school was to take the interstate. She walked on the interstate to get to school.
So she wouldn't be counted absent.
Right, right. Why?
Because OPS, if you, Burke, I think if Burke, South, and Vincent don't provide transportation to their own, own home school, even if they live seven miles.
Right, so that's the situation with Jamila's family as well. Um, her sister was caught up in the system, and she was actually going through juvenile court, and she was out of the home, and the one issue for the single mother, for their single mom, was transportation, to get from Ninety-third and Blondo to South High School. We called and asked every agency we could ask who's involved in this attendance issue, you know, where attendance is so important, and no one could provide even an answer to how to help with that situation.
And I have to echo that, because people that I talk to in court, this transportation issue is an issue that came up primarily in OPS, and sometimes with people moving, they could not get their kids to school.
Right.
They, they just could not.
Now, in her situation
But I told her, put her under an IEP and tell her you want, you want transportation.
But her, her issue, you know, Ninety-third and Maple or Blondo, there's a map bus station, or map bus stop that goes there. And Burke, there is no map
But see, here's the problem with that, a ninety-five pound little girl
Right, no, it's not okay.
Walking to a bus stop four blocks away at night, because it's dark when those kids go to school, and to get on the bus to get all the way to South High School, and that was the issue, is that her mother did not want to put her daughter in danger.
Right, no, I don't, you know, I, I, you know, it's just too far, you know, it's their home school or whatever. And then the other situation is, this law has made parents scared and forcing their kids to go to school. My son, who's a brittle diabetic, had to go to school two days ago, sick, where he could pass out. If he passes out and dies, whose fault is that? It's not his fault, I sent him to school on the bus, where he shouldn't have stayed home. But, you know, I lost my kids for two years, for forty-one days, part or whole days. So they're scared, and if they don't go to school, they're gonna get taken again.
And what kind of education is, are they getting with that? My child is the same way. When she's chronically ill, she's home, because she can't physically do anything else. But when she's running a temperature, she's going to school, because she knows she can get to school to, through a temperature, so she's not only infecting everybody else, but it's under threat that these kids are going to school.
Right.
And I'm telling you, she's not engaged at that point, when, when people are saying, oh, and if you're not there, you're gonna be taken from your, your parents, or from your home, or you're going to go to court, or your parents are going to have to spend thousands of dollars in legal fees to, to try and, and fight this. It is just so wrong.
I mean, even last year, my son, he, he also has arthritis, he's got, he's a sick little guy, and he has arthritis. You're talking about a thirteen-year-old that could not hold his own underwear up because it hurts so bad, and the OPS bus, because he has to be in a wheelchair at that time, because he can't walk, because he hurts. They won't provide it, because he doesn't have a wheelchair that accommodates his life.
So these are all these issues that are not being talked about, that would help with attendance, and help students get to school and not be afraid, not go on the
And at that time, if I did have a car, he wouldn't be able to get to school, because where I lived at the time, there was no, no map bus at all, there's, you know, you couldn't even walk a mile and get a map bus, you know, you had to, it was a long ways. I mean, I lived on Hundred and Sixty Second of Maple, and he went to way, but you're still making your child, how much of an education is that if your son's sitting in class, and he's in pain, because he's sitting down, because he hurts so bad, that it didn't matter which way he sat, he still hurt.
So these are the stories, right.
Um, great, great stories, um, and I wanna say, thank you guys for coming out, and Sharif, you're always, you're always, you're always in the midst of things. And that, and that's what this thing is about, is getting those interviews in the room, to understand our story, and it can help us go and get some things changed. So we really have an ally with, with Sharif, and some things that he's doing, it's in the chambers and others. So, uh, let's bring it back, and, and hopefully take something actionable out of what we're discussing.
Could we, could we end with talking about what we're doing moving forward, so that you can decide if you wanna join in on that? And maybe Brenda can help with this, but, you know, um, we have been working to get this law addressed in the legislature for 2014. So, um, one way to stay plugged in with that activity and, and join it, you know, when, when things happen, and you're interested in joining, like when we're going to the OPS School Board, when we're talking to the OPS School Board, or other district school boards, or when there's a family who's reached out and they want to tell their story, they need people to, to listen to their story. Um, it's published on the nebraskafamilyforum.org website, and it's on, you know, that, the email, or the website is listed on your um agenda that we didn't follow at all today, really. But, um, but it's a great discussion, so I don't care. But, um, there's also a Facebook page, where you, if you join it, there are six hundred and forty people there right now, join the Facebook page, because you will stay up to date on everything that's happening, and we are the leading organization working to get this overturned, so.
And from, from your perspective, Sharif, what, what can we do as parents, um, until 2014, to get this repaired? Because we've got a lot of kids that, that'll be going to the practice like he did.
Um, so let me say this shortly, for the attendance collaborative, and what we're doing was a five-year charge to find out a way to help schools be in a situation where that, okay, the law came about because there were kids at forty and fifty days, which, so they were like, well, we're lawmakers, this is what we'll do. The attendance collaborative came about to say, schools, this is what you do, so you won't have kids and families that don't have those resources out there. So we came up with a manual on, on how to interact. Most of it relates to, know your students, know the parents, find out what they need, and give that to them. Um, so, once we're done with that at the end of June, then what we do as a tennis collaborator will be done. The coalition itself is a permanent community partnership, so I think, I think that's important to know, that that's, that's something that's permanently, something that needs to be in places where the different people are there. Um, I think it's important that we continue to have a community, a, a, a family voice in that. What we're missing now is a student voice that regularly is a part of that. I think as far as what parents can do is to stay in communication, demand things of the school, make sure that the school stays in communication with you. The, the conversation's related to, um, not knowing that there are meetings that are happening with kids, there needs to be things like you mentioned, where you let the principal know that these things are the case. Communication is an important part of it, principals are gonna look at it a variety of different ways. The most important role for parents to have is that you're constantly communicating and advocating for your student, and it's important for students to know that they can go to their parents and that, and, and get that advocacy at home, even if these students are the ones that are once getting in trouble at school as well, but they need to know that on the attendance issue, as well as those, that they can go to the parents and, and keep them involved. And, and then finally, just what was advocated for, which is, pay attention to what's going on, and show up when there's a conversation that needs to happen, especially if, um, it's something where they need to know what parents really feel, those are the spots to do, to go to. And honestly, as an organization, uh, there are some who may say, well, I'm gonna dismiss the group, because I know you don't like us. So it's important that there's families that support the forum in saying, look, I'm not an official part of the group, and I don't go to thi- but I'm here today because it's important, and that holds more weight, your voices, voices hold more weight, young people's voice holds more weight, and it needs to advocate, the leaders pulling that together, but if they're the only face, you know, um, that, that are showing up, it's not gonna be effective. It's gonna happen when
Is that only OPS?
No, it's, it's where, it's where, it's where
Is it through the learning community?
No, it's, there's no
Boundary?
There's no one, it's, it's, this is a truly a coalition. I'm in charge of it now, because I was the one to call it together, but I don't need to be. It's, this is just anybody that wants to be a resource for helping students and families. The attendance is the conversation that started it, the point of the attendance was increased academic performance and graduation. So I used to tell, when I first started doing, um, talking to schools, and they would bring up scenarios, let's say they were to bring up, if I was talking to Brian, and they were like, well, we have a student, and she's gone this many days, and, and we found out that she went to Florida, and I was like, what's your GPA? Well, this. Did she turn in her work? Yes. How about you take that name and put it right at the bottom of the list, and then go on, because that's not the point. Uh, there was another student who was at South High School, who didn't go to school regularly, because he was a smart kid, who was a smart aleck, and he was just like, I don't go to school, because I'm gonna go to W University, and they don't have school on Fridays, so I don't go to school on Fridays. So, totally just making up his own reason for not going to school. I happened to find, the, the schools talked about anonymously, there was a kid that doesn't come to school, and then there was a, a, a focus group, and I met with a kid, and he was like, yeah, I don't go to school. I said, on Fridays? He goes, right. And I was like, the, the teachers don't like you, because you're bucking the system, you're not going to school every day, and yet you're academically superior to most students. However, you have a good point, you wanna go to college? I said, take your Fridays off, read books, and then do book reports on Monday. You know, I'm not telling you, you need to be in school every day, I'm just saying, do something that impresses them. So, for the attendance collaborative, I just say, all that to say, the point was, if students have difficulty in school, then taking five days off for, for reasons that they just feel like it, is not an option for you as a kid. So, but if a kid is not, so I, we told them, it's about your academics, that's the reason why we're on this, not because it's the law, not because of this, it's because of your school things. And if you can go places and have some educational experiences outside of the classroom, do that, because that's what you learn. That's the whole reason why Service Learning Academy and all these other things happen. The kids that are doing well at school have these opportunities, they're going on spelling bees and other things like that. Sometimes you find an opportunity as a parent, I cannot say, ignore the law and just do what you want to, because I know that there's real situations that happen, and if you or your children have these pre, these things on your law when something else comes, there's pre-existing things that they're holding you accountable. So you're already in the system, and now this. And if we know our teens, something's bound to happen at some point, and if we don't have ways in which we're advocating for keeping ourselves and our kids out of the system, then, then we're gonna be at a loss. So the coalition will continue.